We will go ahead and begin this Community Service City Council Committee meeting. It's approximately 5:00 PM on Monday. The first agenda item is the election of the Chair and Vice Chair. I would like to nominate Councilman Juan Villegas as Chair of the Committee.
I'll second.
Very good, all those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously with the two members that are here. I will now yield the mic to you Chairman Villegas.
Thank you very much Councilmember Salorio. And we are going to nominate a Vice Chair and nominate you be the Vice Chair of the Committee. Those in favor?
I will agree conditionally, you know, if Councilmember Benavides, when he joins us in the future, if he has interest, possibly he may have interest as well, but at least for sake of today's meeting and the immediate next meetings, I agree to be Vice Chair. Thank you.
Okay noted for the record. So, I'm gonna go to item number two. That motion's gonna pass by the way for yours. Item number two is gonna review the bylaws. Do you have any?
They look fine to me. I know I had asked that we further in our agenda discuss the committee name so we could go to that then and at some point that should be taken into account, but maybe just a question for staff, the rest of the bylaws, they remain the same?
Yes.
And they've worked well in the past and staff has in suggestion, any changes? Okay, you know.
Just the main change.
As needed, yes. So given that, I'm fine with the rest of the bylaw items, just do want us to be mindful that in a future item, we'll be discussing the name of the committee.
So we're gonna go ahead and approve the bylaws?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second, passes. We're gonna go to item number three, review and approve the proposed meeting schedule for this committee.
I'm sorry, the minutes, right?
No, no, the schedule. Over here looking for... So this is scheduled to meet every, say twice every quarter? Do you have any objections there Councilmember Salorio?
No, I guess quarterly is fine and if we need to have any emergency meetings during these quarterly meetings, we can and I know too also in between some of these meetings, we have joint meetings with the school district, so it may seem like they're only quarterly meetings, but they're really at least a couple more meetings, given that there are some joint policy meetings with the school district. So, given that, at least for now, I'm fine with this committee's schedule and would make that motion.
Okay. We'll pass. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion passed. We're gonna go to approve the minutes from the last scheduled meeting.
We weren't here, so maybe we postpone this until...
Well, neither was Mr. Benavides.
Mr. Benavides wasn't either.
This would be more administrative.
Turn your mic on.
More administrative? Like, you know, you can, I believe, you can pass it, making note for the record that you were not here, this is just administrative, so that the next time you have minutes, it will actually be your minutes from today's meeting.
That would trust the staff that this is an accurate representation?
Yeah, well...
Of what occurred, fair enough.
Yeah, so the record would show that we, this is a new committee, this is an old committee, this is administratively just to be able to close the minutes and move forward and all that, something like that.
Okay, very good, we will move forward. Item number five, gonna discuss then, name of the committee. Do you wanna go ahead and move forward with it?
On the committee, well, and the approval of the minutes, I guess that they're approved by me and by, I think, Councilmember Villegas.
Administratively, it's been approved.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
On the discussion of the name of the committee, you know, I do feel like we ought to have education and youth somewhere in the name and today we in fact had at least an online article talking about the need for the city to focus in on youth issues. So I really would recommend either one of two options, number one, that we go back to the historical name, which is Parks, Recreation, Education, and Youth Committee?
Sure.
Or if not, the Education, Education, and Community Services Committee. I mean, I do wanna acknowledge that, you know, at least one of the council members...
What was that last option that you just said?
Or that it be Youth, Education, and Community Services Committee? Cause you know, there was interest from, you know, at least one council member, if not more, in having community services in the name, so I don't wanna totally disregard that suggestion either, but those are kind of the two ideas that I have.
I like the second name, Education, Youth, and Community Services.
Yeah, and that would almost kinda sound like a they ask committee, though there's a C in there, but, so Youth, Education, and Community Services Committee?
That sounds, if, do you wanna vote on it now or do you wanna bring it back for full committee?
I think we should go ahead and do it now, I mean, you know, we and all these committees have a lot of work to do and there's no need to keep postponing it.
So I'll make a motion to call it Education, Youth, and Community Services Committee.
Youth, Education, and Community Services Committee.
Youth, Education, and Community Services Committee.
Oh, you wanna talk to the other one? Youth, Education, and Community Services Committee, very good.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion passed. Number six, major city produced event update.
Yes, I'll be, hello, this is Jeannie Hualva, I'll be making this brief presentation. It's an update on major city produce events and as you can see in the first slide, you know, of course, I think of the Mayo Fiestas Patrias, the 5K and the Fourth of July, which is only some of our events, go ahead. On this particular slide, it's just a brief summary of the email that was sent out to all of the City Council on April the 7th, in the morning before the council meeting. Basically, it's just a reminder that you all did approve all the agreements that went to you all regarding the events. This means anywhere from options for stage, performance agents, street barricades, canopies, equipment, event security, and so forth. Now, Cinco de Mayo is one of our events, Fourth of July, Fiestas Patrias, Fair and Parade, the Downtown 5K Run, and Plaza Navideña. Now, for your, just to remind you, that your staff had a meeting called the Events and Ride Your Committee meeting on March the 9th, and this was at the Santa Ana Senior Center. There, many representatives from the downtown area, from the Downtown Inc., Santa Ana Business Council, Downtown Neighborhood Association, S.A. USD, and other stakeholders attended. The foundation for this is a collaborative and inclusive approach of doing things, so not just the city putting this on, but includes everybody that's involved. We have changed things a little bit to help out the downtown folks. We have a special rate for the downtown bid members and Santa Ana businesses, so we listened to them this last couple of years, so that we could really have them come on board and be part of the events. Now, as far as Cinco de Mayo headliner is concerned, we have Los Releros del Norte and staff is actively developing the entire talent lineup for the weekend. But one particular new item that I wanna bring up is on Saturday entertainment. We do have, we have offered the downtown stakeholders the opportunity to program Saturday. So the entertainment on Saturday will be done by the downtown stakeholders.
That Saturday happens to be the art walk as well, so it makes sense to collaborate with Downtown Inc. and Santa Ana Business Council, since the whole downtown, in the evening in particular, is focused on the art walk, so it makes sense to collaborate for Saturday. Then on Sunday, is, Los Releros del Norte is the A-level talent. And usually Sunday, Sunday is the day where the immigrant community comes out the greatest number, so that's sort of a different way of doing Cinco de Mayo. And Santa Ana Business Council, Downtown Inc. received the inclusiveness very positively on that March 9th meeting.
And just for your piece of information, this particular group has over a million Facebook hits and likes, so people are waiting to see them. Now, the RFP for event production of fiestas in 2018, that's where we're heading, to see if there's south, there's some folks that wanna put it on and do this for us for Fiestas Patrias 2018. We also have to take into consideration what's coming in the downtown area in the near future, the streetcar, and so we'll be having them take a look at that as well.
So, we're going to work with the downtown folks to come up with alternative possible options for stage location for fiestas 2017, to get ready for the, what we believe is construction for the OC Streetcar starting in 2018. At your next council meeting on the 4th, you're approving two OCTA agreements, one on the reimbursement agreement for construction and the other one on amending the design for the agreement. And, so we should think about, because remember, the streetcar goes on 4th Street and that's where we have the booths, that we're gonna have to nudge things and start getting ready for that. Fiesta Patrias is now the 38th year, I think, 38th year, it has a long history. Cinco de Mayo is not as long. Cinco de Mayo was something that was added by the private event producer to try to generate more revenues, they were not able to sustain their business model, and then the city manager at the time asked Parks and Rec staff to continue doing what the private event producer was doing, which was these two big events, but the one that has much more historical value and much more collaborations with El Grito and the parade is Fiesta. Cinco was more of a add-on to try to generate more revenue for the private event producer that used to, first it was Sergio Velazquez and then it was MX Live, MX Live then couldn't sustain itself. And, but we continued, staff continued doing those two big events. I think next year in 2018, we should reconsider and think about whether we should do, continue doing a quality event, I think we should, for Fiesta, cause it involves a parade and it's been very hard for any outsider to figure out how to put all that together, cause it's been tried before and it hasn't. However, Cinco is probably something that can be opened up for some private event producers to do something creative and focus on Fiesta, but that's just discussion right now, because that's not until 2018 for something to think about. Cause there's a lot of resources and a lot of staff time spent on these events, so that's something to think about for 2018.
Very good.
Real quick on the next slide.
While we're there still on that, that's past slide if you don't mind, a couple things.
Sure.
Number one, for any of those events, Cinco, Fourth Fiesta, the 5K, or the Plaza Navideña, I know we seek sponsorships at least for some.
Yeah, for all of them actually.
For any of them, do we get close to paying for city or staff costs or...
It used to be, you correct me if I'm wrong, but it used to be, but because cost has gone up with regards to the equipment rental and street barricades, but also police costs in particular...
Just the size of the event.
The size of the event, so that, that Fourth of July is different. Fourth of July, the biggest expense is $20,000 to $22,000 of the fireworks show, which is about $1,000 per minute. And that, we should try to get more sponsors for that. But it's a fun thing and it's contained in the park.
Right.
Cinco de Mayo and Fiesta Patrias do generate a lot of sponsorship and sales of, the carnival brings us $30,000 to $32,000 in revenue just by permitting them to have the rides and the games. And however though, it does not pencil out, and so it's very hard for a private event producer to truly, as expenses have gone up.
And I think really, all these events are so large that it's hard to fully recoup all the costs, and they're community events, so we're providing a service to the community.
Cinco de Mayo has the possibility of penciling out with a private event producer, because it tends to happen on the first weekend every year of the month which the downtown is really active. You can synergize some of the activities to make something big and profitable.
Got it, got it.
And, but that's for 2018, cause it's too late for 2017. Fiesta Patrias Parade, it is what it is, there's 38 years of tradition. The 5K has been growing in, it's expensive, but it's been very popular, it's been growing with, but it's free, see?
Right, and that one's largely a health and youth event.
Yeah, and it's a lot of fun and it's over after a couple hours. It doesn't have a big impact, there's not have been a lot of complaints, because once the street barricades are over, it's over.
Right.
And then Plaza Navideña is not very expensive, it's really the lighting of the tree and some nice festivities.
The other suggestion I wanted to make, cause I don't know what process we have for the Fiesta Patrias Parade, I don't know if we have an official marshal?
Every year we have...
But I know we kind of do, what's the process for that? I do have a suggestion, but I don't know.
We get suggestions from the community, but every year is different, there is no standing...
But is there a committee, is there a process, is there, who?
We have a committee that meets regularly, getting closer to the parade. We have, first of all, we have a staff events committee, okay? And then we have a committee where all the folks are involved, representation from the different Estados de Mexico, get together and they meet with staff, and so themes for the parade are...
Like Fabio Peña, Ferreira, the Metrocarers, they're involved in that committee.
And I guess you could have multiple marshals, I just wanted to go ahead and do, make a suggestion for the future. You know, California thinks real proud to have Javier Becerra as a new Attorney General and, you know, he's largely been an LA area public official, but I think both for him as well as for our community to get to know him and meet him and introduce him standing in a positive way might be a suggestion for the committee to consider.
Has been noted. Now, on the next two slides, this is the next event that's happening, it's a great community event, it's on Saturday, April the 22nd, is Dia de los Niños, Dia de los Lidos, Children's Day Book Day. And this is brought to you by the library, it's on its ninth annual, and it's just a fun event, it's free, it brings out not just the children, but the families altogether. And the goals for Dia, which has been held since 2009, are to celebrate the presence of children, families, literacy, and cultures, connect children and their families to the world of learning through books, activities, cultural performances, and the library, and introduce the families to different resources. We have a variety of booths here, and we have about a thousand parents and children that participate annually. On the next slide, something that I wanna focus on, last year we added a new component to this particular event, we added an Awa demonstration. So right outside of here, next to the parking structure, you'll see an area fenced off in green. In that particular area, last year, it was in honor of Earth Day, we planted a tree, we have volunteers, 30 volunteers out there, and also the library staff referred folks that wanted more information about this particular, you know, what is Earth Day? To different resources in the library, and water usage as well, and how to do that, how to conserve. But this year, the biggest item for this is that we're gonna make it a little bit bigger, it's gonna be an Earth Day plus slash Dia de Libro. We are working closely with different departments to bring this about, so yes, the library has lead, which is Parks and Recreation, we're also working together with Parks Services.
It's a little confusing, this is where the, this is that, this is that.
Blown up, it's blown up.
This is the library, this is the main library, this is the turnaround, the first turnaround, and this, right now, is partially already converted to...
Which was last year.
Awa means the, remind me, arid groundwater, no, ground, the, it's the groundwater system and demonstration garden, it's, and the acronym is Awa. And just two days ago, the Public Works Department Fred and Nabil have committed, I haven't shared this, that they're gonna create some really beautiful education signs on the groundwater system, and also eventually we're gonna have signage for the types of drought tolerant plants. And this is gonna be the beginning, and we have over 100 volunteers from the Mormon Church youth that will help us plant that day. April 22nd is truly Earth Day. Last year, we did half of this garden, half of this garden over here, and it was April 23rd, it wasn't the official Earth Day, but this time is the official Earth Day. So I believe, from the city's perspective, Dia de los Niños is gonna be the official Earth Day celebration. And so, I think it's gonna be a really good story and lots of kids come and we work really closely with the police department to make sure that the area is ready for having lots of positive public participation. But, the idea that there's a library here and there's a law library over here lends the common area to be programmed for educational opportunities such as this demonstration garden. And that's just a kind of a smart way to sometimes program common area, areas that has basically two bookends or two libraries.
I haven't walked it, is it cordon off already, is it?
Yeah, actually we put...
Bed stop, because I know the homeless population out there.
It has a little green fence around it.
It has a fence.
Decorative, it's not high.
I'm very, very familiar with that and...
Yeah, actually, if you go right now, it doesn't even, this is an old picture, so actually, there's the decompost granite trail that goes across this already, and this part of it, or this part of it, is now have all the drought tolerant plants, including a live oak tree that was planted last year. So, we're gonna finish up the rest of this island on April the 22nd with lots of activity and celebration on Earth Day. The water department has resources to educate anyone anyway about water education, groundwater, and they're gonna be involved with that. And, so it's gonna be an exciting day, I think, for not just the library, but the entire community because of fun activities with the family and the kids and the environment.
I'm very familiar with Dia de los Niños, because I had a booth there for a while.
Oh, great.
Every year, for selling my books and making information available for the families. Great event, it's always a good turnout, and we block off Ross Street, is that correct?
At times, I don't know what the plan is right now, because of the construction.
Okay, very good. Anything else on that?
That's all.
Okay, so that completes number six. We are, let me backtrack real quick, we did not get a chance to do the public comments, is there any public comments?
No.
I see no public comments, we don't have anything, I'm gonna move forward, thank you. Number seven, the Dan Young Soccer Complex.
Hi, my name's Enrique Marbano, the Community Services Supervisor for Area 6, and part of it is Centennial Park. If you look through your packet, there is a presentation for Centennial Regional Park, it's a Dan Young Soccer Complex and Centennial Park Programming Update. The next slide, as you know, is the Dan Young Soccer Complex. The Dan Young Soccer Complex serves youth and adult soccer community seven days a week. The location consists of four fields, three soccer fields, two that are natural grass, one of them is synthetic turf, and then another soccer field that's also lined up to be a football field, it's also synthetic turf. Recently, the synthetic turf were renovated in August of 2016, and we had our grand opening on October 15th, 2016, as you can see there. Next slide, the Dan Young Soccer Complex currently serves the following, seven adult soccer organizations, nine youth soccer organizations, four local high schools, one local university, four large-scale youth soccer tournaments, and several special events. Perfect example is, in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna be hosting the Orange County GRIP Soccer Camp by the Orange County District Attorney. We consistently host our city flag football championships and other activities.
Which local university?
I'm sorry, Betesta University. Going on to the next item, is Centennial Park Programming. Centennial Park, obviously is the home for the Dan Young Soccer Complex, which serves our local youth and adult soccer community seven days a week. It's also the home of Godinez Fundamental High School. With that, we have a joint use agreement. A joint use agreement is currently in place with Santa Ana Unified School District for the use of their athletic fields, gymnasium, basketball courts, amphitheater, and several classrooms. We also host Centennial Education Center, which assists in providing educational opportunities to the area adult residents. We have a skate park, continuously provides a positive alternative outlet to local youth residents. And Centennial Park is also conducts special events, it serves as a hub for large-scale park events by local organizations, and it's the home for the CS Santa Ana Independence Day Celebration.
Do you pause there a little bit? The skate park, I think it works pretty well, right? It gets pretty good usage and there are not many problems, I mean, maybe every now and then a little bit of graffiti and maintenance, just with paint chipping off, but what are the overall maintenance reports or issues if any?
Well, we have vandalism and graffiti, and we have signs that says, the state law says that if you're, I think it says that if you're under 18, you need to have safety equipment on, except that skateboarding coaches usually, it's not cool to wear safety equipment, but the signage helps with our liability. The issue that has been reported, I don't know to what extent, is a reality, but I suspect there is some truth to it, is that because it's pretty much, no staff is overseeing, and that's because of the lack of resources, that there tends to be a controlling of the use of the skate park by the older kids, so that the younger kids don't have an opportunity to learn how to skate, that there's just, you know, they don't get a chance to be in the queue and use it. So, they're in a hope to try to correct that, the Orange County Water District is, as you know, or may not know, that is, have an agreement that they're gonna be, in order to help the groundwater system, they're going to be drilling and having some injection wells in Centennial Park. And to give them that right, we negotiated that they need to repave the entire parking lot and streets, as well as add a restroom at the youth for Dan Young Soccer Field, which is needed, you know, they have to walk all the way, like a real restroom, instead of a porta potty. And, and heighten the fence for the skate park, cameras, and a little booth for staff, which we could use to make sure that at certain periods of time, young kids have a chance to learn how to skate. Because left alone, the demand is so high for skating, that we are told that the problem is that the young kids are not able to have a chance, they're just pushed out of the way.
And that may be opportunity, especially for the summer, and I know there's a related item about internships later on, that where we could have a combination of staff or, you know, paid young interns supervise, maybe give lessons and monitor that a little bit during the summer, which, you know, there's probably a little bit more of a need for that. With Godinez High School, are there any major requests from the high school for capital improvements needed for any of the joint use areas? I know it's been some time, I know I received a extension request for a number of different types of improvements and needs over there, but are there any specific lists that staff is watching?
The biggest, I'm thinking of the synthetic field, the biggest discussion we've had was that, I think mainly, mostly, I think all of the high schools, Enrique, you might know this, except Godinez, and there might be another one, that do not have a synthetic football field anymore, there's, Godinez doesn't, okay? So, the football slash soccer field that has a track and has lights, because it's a joint use, we... we, we had, is a natural turf field. And there was a thought that the, the four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars that is on a special account that was generated through adult soccer surcharge. Remember, Centennial is, Centennial is the only place you can play adult in city facilities, as well as some, some blocks in the stadium. That you can use that money and partner with the school district, because it's a joint facility. And the school district can also invest fifty-fifty, if you will, in theory, and create, and change the natural turf field to synthetic field, because that's the trend that they're going for every high school anyway. And there was discussion going on in that direction when there was a refocus for doing other joint use at a different high school at the time, but nothing ever got done. That, that item will, will be coming before you in, in, I don't, it's not April. Jorge, the spyglass is not coming on April the fourth. It's April the eighteenth, I think?
We're projecting the eighteen.
We're projecting the, so there's C D B G money of two million dollars from the proceeds of the sale of that land that had already been articulated and how to spend it by previous council. And, and some of it was that the lights in the walkway at Centennial, the, the lights that Claudia Alvarez, that. But some of it was for about half a million dollars for joint use for Seegerstrom. Originally, it was half a million dollars to join the four eighteen, to make almost a million, to do the synthetic field at Godenas. That, that is, the last time articulation of how to use the two million, that was now no longer Godenas. It was Seegerstrom focused, but it's, it's going to come back to all of you. And for reconsideration on how best to use two million dollars worth of C D B G money on investing in different, different projects. I know that there's been a long expectation on when are we going to fix the lights in the walkway at Centennial, but there still will be some monies to be thinking, thinking about. But that's been the biggest thing, I think, Ron, with regards to the school district asking for improvements for Godenas.
Yeah, I think at one time they were also, I believe at one time they were also asking for batting cages.
They were, and I haven't heard that they brought that up anymore. They, they, they stopped having a discussion about batting cages.
You know, it could be, and this relates to our, our future item on the Joint Use Policy Committee. Maybe we should agendaize this site and potential joint use projects for, for and near Godenas High School.
For the joint policy?
Yes, for the joint policy meeting. That, that would be good. The other item that I'll go ahead and bring up right now, because I don't, oh yeah, this is the last page, I think. I know Steph may have some more, but since we're on this page. I know there's been a growing interest by some of our soccer leagues here, and we're seeing it elsewhere where, given the demand, as well as given that really when you play soccer, and I know council, I know our chairman here is, is a soccer fan and, and player himself, these fields are long. So it takes a lot of effort really to, to, to work it and, and play it. And there's, I think, an interest in, for example, taking one original soccer field and splitting it up into three or four sections where they can play six on six or seven on seven.
Seven on seven.
And I don't know if right now anything would prevent that from occurring, but I would like to encourage that we figure out how to do that.
This is where, where there's been a longstanding discussion. These are two softball diamonds, five and six.
Right.
Correct. And so the idea is that can it be reconfigured in order to, what, what was Edgar's proposal?
Three, a three. He, he was proposing, right now, there's existing two soccer fields on that space.
Right now, you do two soccer fields and two softball fields, a multi-purpose fields.
And Edgar's proposing to add a third soccer field by rearranging the fields.
Okay, so that's how, I thought it was on one, two, three, or four where, oh, here. Way, way better, because it's not really lined or anything, it'd be easy just for them to tape.
We can come back to a future council committee and tell you what, will it mean no longer being able to play softball? That, that, you don't have to answer that question right now, but will that mean a reconfiguration? Will it mean what kind of cost reverse to the sprinkler system and a variety of different things? So we'll come back with the answers, but there's been, Edgar in particular has been advocating for that for, for a while, and he's had lots of meetings with you, Ron, on that, but we can bring it back to you for a detailed discussion.
Yeah, if need be, but if it's something you could administratively do. My understanding is they don't really want any structural changes. They want just the opportunity to be able to, on a regular sized area, tape it up or put, you know, some, say, spray.
Administering, there would be some kind of cost impact?
The only thing, based on his layout, they would require maybe some, possibly some grading work, because right on that south end, there's a small grade change. So it depends on whether his field will impact that grade change or not.
Okay, well, in, in a case like that, if it does involve something structural or staffing, maybe that's something you could bring back, but if you could do it administratively, I would encourage you to do so. And if it's a grading thing, and enough of the leagues agree to it, maybe some of the surcharge money can go towards that. Or I don't know if there's other dollars.
Would there be an impact on softball programming? Do we program those fields for programming?
No, oh.
We currently do program. Godenas High School has two softball teams, a varsity level team and a JV team. And we're actually currently in softball season. So they, they probably, during this softball season, they probably use about anywhere from eighteen to twenty-two hours of that field during non-softball season, which is right before Christmas time. It probably reduces to about twelve to fourteen.
What, would the soccer reconfiguration, Ron, impact the programming of softball?
This, this, the soccer configuration would increase usage. That would impact the softball. But other than impacting the field physically, no, because they're missing the.
So then it would be an art of making sure that you're fair.
Right, balance, right, right. Yeah, I, I don't want this to replace other uses that are out there, including softball. But if, you know, it's, if we could, with minimal costs or staffing, reconfigure those fields so they, they can play six on six or whatever, I think it's good. The more, the more folks we have active on the community.
I'm interested.
Well, they, they, they tend to pay just by the hour, right? But it is more, you know, legs and cleats on there, so there may be a, a reason to, to do that. And that's part of the reason I thought at the time would be good to bring it up, in that if there is some related fee, you do have your updated fee schedule that will go into place July first. That, I don't know, that, that needs to be at the surcharge rate, but maybe there is some.
You, you should know.
Because there'll be, because there will be some minor wear and tear.
The adult soccer surcharge was at one point twenty-two dollars an hour? I forget what it was, but it generated four hundred and eighteen thousand. And then many years ago, because of the recession, council says, oh, let's give it a break. It's really hard, but, so there was a moratorium, but it's still on the books, but we just never started implementing it. You don't have to bring it back to the old original amount. You can, you can, you can set something that's more reasonable to start, because right now you ended at four eighteen. And remember, this, you, you, you talk about this would be great, right? If we add another small field, but wouldn't it be great if this were synthetic field?
Absolutely.
And this wouldn't, this is, this already has lights, so you don't have to do the, so synthetic field, you, you have, a synthetic field is like two natural fields. And then this is a natural turf field. That would require more money, because it doesn't have lights. That's number one. And then the, so this is the one that we're saying you can use the four eighteen to partner with, with the school district and create that as a synthetic field. And then you would be able to, because people play soccer here. It's more expensive, because there's also an additional school district fee, but people play soccer here. But if there was a synthetic field, there would be the bigger demand. So I'm just saying that the soccer surcharge, even at a moderate level, can begin building that, that revenue stream for, for leveraging grants and whatever.
As a match, right, no, I, I, I agree. And, and I think there's some support there, just long as we just don't let the money sit there, which it's been doing. But let's, you know, put it, put it to good use and those are all thoughtful ideas. So if Steph could continue to work with the soccer leagues and do whatever you can administratively, if there's any fees or anything else that doesn't come back to this committee or the council as a whole, that would be fantastic.
So I have a question regarding the, they're playing soccer right now, full size, full field, right? There's two, enough for two full fields.
Correct.
That's what's going on. And they, and we provide the, the goals, right? The metal?
Yes, we do.
We do? We don't provide the nets though, right?
We provide the nets too, also.
Okay, so just keep in mind that if you're going to make that into a three, then you're going to need different goals and nets.
The, the three would be.
Right, I'm just saying that if you're going to convert that, it's a different net, it's a different goal. Just saying. I like that other idea over here with the, the one on the left, where there's already lights. I like, I like that being converted into a.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, the, these three are pretty much programmed for adults. This one, this one, and this one. One, two, three, and this is the fourth youth field.
Right.
And that's where we're going to have the restroom over here, the one in the OC Water District. But that's a couple of years away.
Yeah, I wonder, you know, to the, the chairman's idea of prioritizing the development of that lighted field. Maybe we do have some, some resources to make this happen. I know grants are always nice, but, you know, maybe there are one-time monies out there with what the water district is doing.
We just, this was six hundred thousand, but the drainage.
To refurbish, right, right.
Yeah, we already had a carpet there. You got rid of the old one and you had a new one. So there would be, this would be more than six hundred thousand, because you have to do the drainage system on that. So you don't have to do the lights. So Ron, we have four hundred and eighteen, probably, probably would be closer to a million for a synthetic field.
And the drainage, it'll probably be closer to two million, I think.
About one, about one point five, I think, is what I've been hearing.
Well, okay, so, and we have four hundred and eighteen.
Right.
So, so at a minimum, another, a million dollars to do, to do, to do a city exclusive synthetic field, because this one's joint use. This would be just city exclusive for adults, which is, so if you start to surcharge again, it's easier to be more creative in saying, oh, we'll, we'll catch up. But not, you don't have to charge, you don't, you don't have to go back to the original amount, which I want to say was twenty-two, something like that, twenty-two.
You know, I wonder if we could be creative too, especially if we bring that back, if we can do, I mean, it's always more expensive, but some lease option where we, you know, have a, you know, a revenue bond, if you will, or some kind of financing mechanism where we built it, but with the understanding that it's with the fees coming in of the reestablishment of a, of a surcharge.
Possibility.
I mean, this is a smaller project. I mean, typically, they'll do those revenue things for larger capital projects, but, or some of these companies, you know, they're willing to self-finance. And maybe we do an R V Q or an R F P to see what the market might, might recommend along those lines. And that way, we could essentially get, you know, a field for free, just, you know, with use of their, their future surcharge dollars.
I know if you build it, somebody will want to play it.
Oh, yeah.
Not, no, no doubt, no doubt.
Yeah, and then that way with the surcharge, we could build, the future surcharge, we could build that through finance mechanism. And I bet these companies would, would be willing to do it. And then for the existing four hundred thousand dollars that's sitting in the account, I, I think we ought to consider, I know like on the youth field in particular, you know, you have the need for parents wanting to watch, whatever. And so maybe there are some portable bleachers or just one row of seating. I, I, it's been a while really that I've been detail looked at that field, but I believe there's still no seating for adults or players, right?
Yeah, that is, that is.
So, so, so I would think, especially since you're doing the restrooms too, that maybe there are at least one row or some permanent multi, I mean, or some portable multi-level bleachers with the use of the four hundred and eighteen.
Well, you have to do it for the adult community, because that's for youth. They, they think that it's, they keep an eye on the four, that it has to be four, because that was adult soccer surcharge.
Well, maybe there's something we could do with the, well, I think, you know, the council member here though is talking about also building out one of the fields. So, so let's figure out a package, but there's, there's a lot of need right now and and maybe you're, and you're a soccer player, you've been out there. What, what else could we do with the, the four hundred thousand, primarily for adults? Because they, they did pay it with that intention, but other than the development of that one field, what else, what might we do? And the grading, and the grading, I think that might be an idea too. But, but think about it. I mean, we don't need to decide right now, but there is, there, there is a good fund there to, to promote soccer and fitness.
It's just that they're so, so crowded. I mean, it's such high demand for a, it's, it's crazy sometimes. Well, okay, so that's going to conclude item number, number seven, and we'll, we'll go on to number eight. And thank you, Steph, for that, item number seven. And discussion on the joint policy meeting with Santa Ana.
I would suggest if we can reverse the orders of item eight and nine.
Sure.
We'll go with nine?
Yeah, yeah, maybe Steph could talk a little bit about.
Let's go to item number nine then. Do we have something, Jorge?
Yes, Chair, Vice Chair, Jorge Garcia with the City Managers Office. The purpose of this presentation is to give a little historical context on the current internship program. As of two thousand fourteen, the City Council adopted the Five Year Strategic Plan. Embedded in that was two hundred thousand dollars annually for an internship program. The purpose of the internship program was to attract, develop, and mentor students. And those students have been assigned to every department within the city government, including the police department. As a success, we list a couple of the items there. We've hired over a hundred interns from the high school level to graduate students. The majority of the interns have been from Santa Ana. And the important thing to note there is we cannot restrict residency as a part of the employment. But we do highly market to all of the schools within the city in order to try to increase the turnout of, of who is applying. High school students are typically hired during the summer months, as that's when the greatest availability is there. And then we place our college students year round. For the most part, all of these positions are paid positions. And they range from about ten dollars an hour to twenty dollars an hour at the graduate level. We do offer additional benefits, just like the city, any part-time employee is offered. So we do, for our year-round students, make sure that they stay under the thousand hours and all of the other requirements. From time to time, there are universities or college courses that do not allow the students to get paid. And in those cases, we still bring them on board and we enroll them as employees, but unpaid employees for work compensation and, and other legal matters. But with that, that concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
What kind of, of work are they doing?
Depending on the level, depending on the level, so high school students is a lot more clerical for those that are assigned within City Hall. And we try to place the students in every department and in different divisions. So if it's a City Hall employee, it could be something as simple as answering phones, filing. And then it just depends on what department they're in and what level of education they're in. We'll assign them longer-term projects. For example, our graduate management intern in the City Managers Office, Daniel Soto, works on very high-level projects and is right now helping with communications, some of our longer-range planning. So it really goes with, part of it is pairing. When we do the recruitment, which actually will go out in April for the next round, we ask the students what areas they're interested in or what departments they're interested in, and we try to place them. We try not to force someone who is interested in Parks and Rec to go to the police department unless they're interested in that. Um, the only caveat that I'll throw out there with the Police Department is because of the extensive background that's required. Um, we typically do not, uh, place high school students in that department. Uh, for that, we'll place, um, college or graduate students.
Okay, very good. Uh, any questions?
Yeah, um, I know in the past, there's been some resources like from the, the Work Center, which are, you know, Tennessee federal dollars. Is this two hundred dollars in- inclusive of that, or is there?
This is general fund dollars exclusively. There are no additional dollars as a part of this. Um, the Work Center has different opportunities, but not, uh, not a part of this internship program, and um, we can definitely look at expanding that, and if there's an interest, we can look at our legislative platform to see if there's opportunities for us to pursue, um, either state or federal funds towards those goals. Um, that's definitely something that we can look at.
We have a, a, a good active youth.
Or something there. Yeah, well, what I'm interested in seeing, and maybe starting with this year, but I know particularly with some of the Work Center programs, they've been, um, in existence longer, or they have other processes that already may be dictating what this summer looks like, but, uh, starting this summer or in the future, I'd like to see all the summer internship programs and job programs for youth and young adults be combined, so it's a bigger program rather than different fragmented programs, uh, as well as to the extent that, um, the Chamber of Commerce or Downtown Nank, the San Ana Business Council also want to tie in wi- wi- with our program, as well as the high school has a summer, not the high school does, the school district has a summer job and internship program. Um, if we can somehow all work together and maybe have, you know, common applications, maybe once a week or once a month have like a soft skills day where people, you know, learn about, uh, internships or have certain speakers come, I think, uh, that would be good. Uh, and then another related conversation, I did also on, on, on Friday, talked to Councilmember David Benavides a- a- about this, uh, there, there were two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that had been identified for some type of partnership program with the school district, maybe also involving, uh, Lathrup Intermediate and, and doing something there, and, you know, I mentioned my thoughts on, you know, really to use that wisely from the mid-January to the end of June timeframe seemed, uh, complex, uh, for, for different, uh, reasons that, um, why not consider investing some of that towards the, an internship program, so we could, um, broaden the reach. Uh, he also remains committed to still wanting to do something with Lathrup or around this joint-use idea, just because so many meetings were had with staff, school board members, superintendent, parents at Lathrup, a lot of work was done, and then he acknowledged it doesn't really all need to be done by June, that it could be a larger timeframe, and so the thought was, well, maybe we consider investing half towards the internship program, half towards some type of programming at Lathrup and/or similar schools. So he was very open and interested in, in that, so.
So, I'm sorry, you said and/or similar schools?
Yeah, because I, I, I feel, and I know, uh, Acting City Manager Moi, we had discussed, uh, we already have things like the Civic Center Act and other scheduling processes that the city has and that the school district has that. Unless if you have active programs by certain nonprofits, I don't know how we would, you know, use really even a hundred and twenty-five thousand w- wisely over a six-month or ye- or year-long period, but if it were at multiple sites and if there were particular requests that maybe, you know, staff or the school district might c- consider something, but I guess my only just suggestion for today is to direct staff to, um, figure out how to use that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar earmarked amount and split it between resources towards an internship program and towards some kind of partnership program with the school district, whether it be at Lathrup and/or similar schools, uh, uh, Councilmember Villegas, I don't know if you have other, other thoughts as, as well, but, uh, you know, there's a lot of ne- need for youth, uh, you know, during the summers where there's a lot of idle, you know, young people, and uh, I think there is some type of opportunity for us to grow this program, as well as we do need to figure out how to, how to make good by the many conversations with, uh, the parents in the, in the school district, with Lathrup and, and/or similar schools.
My concerns are, uh, thank you, Councilmember Solario, my concerns is, um, about, uh, control of who's gonna use the, uh, the facilities. Um, is it open to everyone, or who's it open to more specifically? Uh, who's gonna, uh, work to make sure that facilities aren't damaged, because, you know, they are, um, the classrooms or what have you, whatever venue we're, we're using. So, uh, I guess there's gonna be a lot of discussion on that, is that?
Yeah, and maybe.
Be careful, because we don't wanna damage anything, we wanna make sure we have the right people in there that are gonna respect the, the schools and, um, you know, just, we need to kinda develop something.
Yeah, and I know the Acting City Manager has, uh, started a conversation with the superintendent about that program, and I think, you know, he was also waiting for direction from the council on wh- where to move with that, and, uh, I had also talked to the superintendent about ideas for these resources. She also liked the idea of the internship programs in a big way. They also have, uh, academies that, you know, they're really trying to do a lot around, but I, but I'm sure if the idea of still doing something at Lathrup or similar schools, I think for her and her school board member, I think, that might be something to think about. So I, I just wanna, you know, have us have the staff reach out and consider, uh, what to do both with augmenting the size of our internship program with those resources, as well as, um, uh, bringing some resolution to this outstanding commitment of, of, uh, joint-use partnerships at Lathrup and/or other schools.
Anything else on item number nine? No? Okay, thank you, we're gonna move on to, uh, gonna go back to number eight?
Eight, right.
So, uh, discussion for, on the, uh, policy for joint use.
So I, I definitely think, uh, what we just discussed, the nine, those two programs could be on the agenda, and hopefully by then Steph would have some additional, uh, uh, insight for, for what to do with those resources. Um, I have, again, have heard concerns and interest about ideas for the, the joint-use facilities at, at Centennial Park and Good Dinas High School, so I think that would be, uh, good. I, I know too, just in general, the district, in terms of a future school bond, doesn't really need a new facilities, cause enrollment growth is stable, and if anything, uh, probably still decreasing a little bit, but they continue to have a need to renovate facilities, renovate technologies, renovate athletic fields, and so I do want us to begin thinking about places like this, that as they're considering, uh, also potential school bond, that, uh, we can with respect to this large joint-use site, think about what might be some, so, some ideas.
Mister, uh, Acting City Manager, I, I understand you were the one in charge of the, uh, review on the joint-use um, applications or any kind of deals that were being worked on. They were going, they used to go past your desk.
Say that question again.
Was that, was, uh, the, all the joint-use requests, uh, for, uh, that were taking place, they would go by your office?
Yeah.
Yeah. Now that you're the Acting City Manager, is, are you still reviewing those, or is someone else?
Um, well, I, I would review a- any and all of the agreements, but the beginning of the discussion for new joint-use agreements would be through the Parks and Recreation Agency. And, um, but based on the entrance, interest of, of the, of the City Council and, and the school board, um, the, the, this particular item, uh, we, I made note of, of the items you suggested, Councilmember Solario, for the, the first joint policy meeting, such as the possible internship and Lathrup and maybe other facilities. And then, um, I think you, the potential of, of identifying areas for investing on future joint-use improvements, physical capital improvements, I think, um.
At Centennial Park, yeah. Centennial Park slash Good Dinas High School. And, and maybe from prior city conversations or pre-committee meetings, are there any other things that we feel like we need to discuss with the?
Oh, okay, so.
School district counterpart?
So fir- first of all, the, the actual agenda item is to discuss joint policy meetings, so, just so that you know how it has been occurring in the past. Usually, a, a pre-council committee, now it's the Youth Education Community Services Council Committee, would meet on a Monday, uh, as today is Monday, at, around this time in this room. And then we would add, a, a, a regular meeting, this is a special meeting, a regular meeting. We would then add to the City Council Committee, um, items to discuss, or, or to, to, to get, to actually to prepare for the items that were already on the agenda for next week on Monday, we would have the joint policy meeting. So in your next regular meeting, the tradition was that you set up, set up the regular, um, Youth Education Community Services Council Committee, so it's, it's possibly in April, I think, is the next one. So it's at April on a Monday, and at the same time, we work with your calendars and the school district calendars. Typically has been the President of the Board and the Vice President of the Board, but they can decide on which two of the five board members would be in the joint policy meeting. They agree on the date and the time, and it's worked out really nice that you guys meet on a Monday, and the following week is the joint policy meeting. So the Monday before is the council meeting, you kind of prepare you and give you the information. And then there's the joint policy meeting, and we take turns, sometimes at the school district, sometimes it's over here in the city. We take turns in writing minutes, et cetera, because they're Brawn Act meetings. And that's usually wh- what it goes. Now, in addition to letting you know how it has been coordinated in the past, we're gonna add these two items. The item that used to be discussed, but then we stopped discussing was, administratively, we have a lot of joint-use agreements, like Monroe Elementary, over there by Delhi. That's a joint-use field in the elementary. Spurgeon Intermediate is a joint-use, because a long time ago, time ago, the city invested, whether it was sprinkler systems or lights and whatever, so we have this joint-use facility, and we program those facilities. But they're all independent agreements, they're really, so they're, some of them are really old. One concept in order to make it easier to review on an annual or or twice a year is to create a master joint-use agreement. The master joint-use agreement would have these, these exhibits or attachments for each specific school. And that's a lot of work. The current system works, but it's a lot of s- some very old joint-use agreement. The idea, in order to be able to systemize and improve the system, the concept of a master joint-use. And we even had drafts.
Right.
They agreed on a draft, and we agreed on a draft, and then somehow or other, interest was lost. And, and, you know, I, I didn't bring it up again, but we were heading down that path. It's something that you may wanna bring. It, it could help administratively. The other thing that we haven't truly operationalized is that, under the previous city manager, there was approval in the budget of seventy-five thousand dollars for the new, for a, for the next new joint-use agreement, for an in, uh, a re- irrevocable fund, so that, that, for example, um, at the Roosevelt Walker, which is the next one that's being built, it's seven and a half million dollars. If the city puts in seventy-five thousand, that's what we had identified, and the school district puts in seventy-five, at the end of the day, they may say, hey, let's make it fifty, let's make it fifteen, so there's a hundred thousand. That becomes a revocable fund for investing in the maintenance, the ongoing maintenance of the joint-use facility, instead of scratching our heads and not having a nest egg as, as it depreciates and stuff. And that wasn't, that was a good concept, and there is seventy-five thousand, never connected to, yet, to a joint-use. It's there, correct? I think, it's, it's there. Because we, we never finished the discussion, and, and that's a irrevocable fund. There could be, in the master joint-use, there could be a reference to the aerobic fund for the new facilities. You want, you don't really wanna go back in time, because you're talking about really old facilities, like, you know, and that's, that's a lot, you wouldn't need to really build a big nest. But moving forward, as you do new joint-use agreements, like, we just had to replace the synthetic field at two of their Dan Young Soccer Complex, it was a total of a million and two. And, but that wa- there always weren't joint-use facilities, so we could have been building, if it were joint-use, half them and half, very much like, like the Civic Center Joint Powers, you know, um, those are concepts to be discussed, maybe not, not in the first meeting, but eventually, um, if there's interest on behalf of the council, but you do have seventy-five thousand for this ongoing, to, to use when necessary, but they're supposed to add their fifty percent. That hasn't happened, the school district, and right now, I don't know if the time is best.
Yeah, it's looking tough for you to bring that one back, but I think the master agreement, it may be good to get, uh, Councilmember Villegas and I and their, the, whoever the two reps are gonna be at the school district for us to
Sure.
hear some history on that and what that might mean for future improvement. I think that would be
Well, and that is a third.
A good item to add, a third, a third item.
Very good.
And maybe that meeting, you know, we're in, uh, I mean, really at the end of March, may, maybe a, a, a meeting in mid-April, late April with them?
Mid or late April?
Yeah, just, just to catch up. I, I know, just because we're kind of off schedule a little bit doing the, uh, doing the, the Monday after may be hard, so I'm thinking.
Sure.
Rather than, you know, wait a, a, a month and a half.
Okay, okay. So explore an earlier joint, uh, joint-use policy.
In, uh, in late April.
So we're actually, uh, on item number ten.
Item number ten now.
Let's, we're talking about the future items, this discussion, I guess. Is there anything else from anyone?
No, uh, no, I, if you have any thoughts for this co- this committee's next agenda item, um, we'll, we'll always probably, cause we're always doing events, give you a brief update. The, you should know that, that Genie will prepare a follow-up email to the entire council, because they're always interested on what we just gave you on the, on the talent, uh, that's gonna perform and all that. That way, years ago, there used to be an ad hoc committee for fiestas. Now, this is now taking its place. You're hearing first, then we relay to the entire council on the mechanics, if you will, some more detail on the, the big events. That will occur in the next week or so.
I think one, one item for the future, and I know in between, we can add other items via the staff, um, I know we have a lot of, vacant may not necessarily be the right word, and surplus isn't the right word, but we have a variety of different city-owned lots throughout the city, uh, and I know at, at some point, if we already have it, we need to figure out how to do an RFP to sell some of those lots, or have some competitive process for nonprofits to consider using some of them, but perhaps some of them could be low-maintenance pocket parks or city-run gardens or other
Sure.
other items. So I don't know if staff has kind of looked at some of these lots that are out there that would be beneficial. Again, you know, they're, they're nice to envision, but then you gotta pay to maintain them, so it, it is a challenge, uh,
Yeah.
but maybe we can discuss, uh, that. And then I have a related thought that as we have some of these parcels that we may need to sell, that maybe we consider the proceeds of what we do sell, putting it into a maintenance fund that can be used to help support future, um, deferred maintenance projects, you know, as needed, because I know sometimes emergencies occur, and we have resources or don't, and when you sell land, it's a one-time, uh, benefit and not always used well, and sometimes we forget that, we gotta maintain things, and so.
Those are good thoughts.
That, that, that's just a thought, but at least in, in terms of a future agenda item, I'd like for us to discuss, um, uh, uh, available
Or leasing.
City, city land that could be, that could be sold, you know.
I don't know about sold, maybe some other form of, you know, contract to look at also, I mean.
Right, but, but I think the city traditionally does sell, uh, you know, vacant lands, cause we don't have use for it, but maybe some could be leased, or some could be, again, city-owned, uh, uh, parks. city-owned parks or community gardens or skate parks, whatever it might be, so if staff can bring back, and maybe they're not, maybe it could be that staff doesn't believe any of those are worthwhile for park-type purposes.
So you should know that a similar exercise was done, and it resulted in two new parks that are on their way. We don't have funding to develop them fully, but that's the Lacy Park across Cafe Conneche. That was something that wasn't going to be a park, the same with the Rayton Myrtle, which is 1.4 acres, and those are now, you should know that recently, there is traction for bringing back to council, this committee may have an interest on the community land trust, which is the old Rescue Mission land. There's, you know, the land next to the city yard. So that needs to be developed with regards to them, we having an agreement in figuring out how to do the transfer of the land and the deal points with regards to how the land is going to be used, et cetera, et cetera. That mayor may not need to do a review at a council committee meeting, but that is kind of similar to some of the things that you're bringing up right now. I did recently meet with the representatives of the coalition, and I asked them if they had, they're working on getting their nonprofit status, it's not completely done, especially the federal part, that takes a little while longer. And so there were discussions of, could there be some transfer of the land to, like, a surrogate nonprofit? Those are things that are being proposed by them, it needs to be analyzed and thought through, but it is just something also that was on its way, but isn't completely firmed up, that I'm just bringing to your attention, because that is really the use of, in that case, some land is owned by the successor agency, some by land bond, owned by the city, but it was, it's CDVG money, and then some land is just city land, and this one in particular is city land, the Rescue Mission. So it's something that's going to have to come back to council. When it's ready, city attorney's office needs to work on it, and like I said, they recently met with me, the coalition.
Okay.
Is there an interest in bringing that issue?
Yeah, no, I think by you raising it, it is an interesting thought on whether maybe that item should come first here before it comes to the full council, and I know in separate meetings, Councilmember Viejas and I also have met with some of the proponents of that idea, and I think really there's still a lot of work to be done, both on both ends, that maybe there is some logic to having a broader conversation here, Councilmember Viejas, but what are your thoughts?
We can discuss that, yeah, we can bring that here.
Yeah, let's bring it here first.
Okay.
All right, very good. Is there anything else? I see no hands up, so we are going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.
Sounds good.
Thank you everyone for.